All right. Good evening, everyone. Sorry for the delay. We will start our meeting. We'll reconvene open session and I'll have our moment of silence and pledge allegiance. Thank you, everyone. All right, this evening, we have our Gem Awards, and they are a very special Gem Award this month. We are going to be honoring our substitute teachers. And since Ms. Tyndall is not here this evening, I'm going to read hers. H O B would like to nominate Mrs. Lisa Malone for the December Gem Award. Mrs. Malone is serving as our extra substitute at H O B this year, and she goes the extra mile whenever we need her to be that morning. Lisa's can-do attitude and flexibility are greatly appreciated. Love Creek will be honoring Mrs. Susan Schatzman as our Gem recipient this month. She's been substituting for our school the past year during the pandemic and has taught from kindergarten through fifth grade. She always does a phenomenal job. We simply adore her positive energy, enthusiasm, and dedication to our students.
Milton Elementary School would like to recognize Donna Gabella for the Substitute Gem Award. Mrs. Gabella has been a great addition to our M A S team. She works to build positive rapport with the students, staff, and families in any of us. Mrs. Gabella has even taken on a long-term substitute position on a kindergarten team. We are lucky to have Donna in the yes.
Joan Misler has been a reliable and effective substitute for the past five years at Rehoboth Elementary School. During the past five years, she has been with us almost every day as a long-term substitute or an 8:00 AM plea to assist with an unexperienced absence. We are grateful for her fidelity to the lesson plans and her willingness to assist whenever we need her. Thank you for going the extra mile, Joan. The Gem Award for SHIELD substitute goes to Katie McDermott. Katie was our day-to-day substitute before taking a long-term position for a staff member on maternity leave. Katie was willing each morning to take on any position we needed, covered and did it with a positive attitude and smile. We are lucky to have her as a substitute at SHIELD.
Beacon Middle School would like to nominate Mr. Christopher Maddox for Beacon Middle School's Going the Extra Mile Award for the month of December. Mr. Maddox has stepped in and served two separate long-term substitute positions at Beacon this year and has done a great job. He is professional, makes connections with his students, and has been a positive member of our team this year. We would like to thank Mr. Maddox for all his contributions at Beacon Middle School this year. The Mariner Middle School would like to recognize Mr. Alan Benson as our December Gem. As a frequent substitute in our building, Mr. Benson builds relationships with our students, supports our staff and programs, and assists us with community ties. Thank you, Mr. Benson, for being part of our Mariner family.
I'll read for Dr. Dan Well as well. The high school team would like to recognize Dr. James Van Skiver as our Substitute Gem for the month. He is currently in his second long-term maternity coverage of 2021-2022 school year. He understands the students he serves, deserves the very best in content and connections. Every month, he sends me a complete list of all positive contacts he has made for his current students. He makes such an impact this year for the Wrestling Teacher Appreciation Night. One of his students invited him to be honored and recognized. Dr. Van Skiver pushes all of us to show up in the our very best. And coincidentally, he is my husband's superintendent.
Victor Garcia has all the qualities of an outstanding substitute teacher, and that is why he is the Suchus Special G M G Gem nominee. Mr. Garcia has a passion for teaching and possesses exceptional interpersonal skills as well as adaptability. Mr. Garcia is able to connect with students' families and staff and is able to make an impact in every classroom that he supports. Mr. Garcia is also a tremendous resource for our E L families and often supports families throughout the I E P process. We are honored to have Mr. Garcia as a substitute teacher and cannot thank him enough for his time, dedication, and support that he provides to our students and families.
And the district office would like to nominate Patty Corrigan as a Gem nominee for being such a great substitute in a time of need. She came in to substitute for the front desk secretary for an entire month as a transition was taking place for a new staff member. Patty was able to seamlessly keep that position running due to her prior experience within the district as a secretary. We are so glad she was willing to come back out of retirement to help when we needed it the most.
All right, this is usually the time where I use my little random picker on my phone to pick one person. But thankfully, Chef has decided to honor all of the recipients with a $50 gift certificate. Every person on that list can get a gift certificate. It's very deserved. And we are extremely appreciative for not only the 10 people named, but all of our substitutes right now. They're keeping us rolling. We appreciate that. So, thank you, everyone. Next on the agenda is citizens' participation. Mr. Davis, you know the drill, sir.
John Davis. So tonight, I wanted to talk about the possibility of taking and setting up a meeting, a community meeting between the board, superintendent, and some of the professionals in the community as well as parents and such that just want to take and have an open dialogue with the board to address some of the policies that they feel could be a beauty. We're doing a really good job with Cape. We've been an innovator in the past. I mean, we were sending our kids to school when no one else in the state was sending kids to school. And my goal with this meeting is to just have an open dialogue and see how we can improve. For example, my son recently had to be quarantined at home because of one of the classmates. To this day, he's still perfectly fine. I mean, I, for one, have contracted COVID. My fiance is contracted COVID. We both had it. Neither one of our kids have. But he had to quarantine at home because of the contact tracing and whatnot inside of the classroom. And the issue was, there was like, it seemed like there was no communication between the nurse, the teacher, and such. And we got bombarded at the end with schoolwork and whatnot. Because, and in the era that, or the day and time that we're in now with virtual learning and everything, and all the different platforms and whatnot that are out there, it would have been really easy for all of that work to be sent. Because we took and we were like, well, what do we do? So we ended up taking and still having him read every day for 30-minute increments on and off and stuff like that. So we did our part at home and made sure that he still was in a learning environment for that timeframe. But now we're bombarded with even more schoolwork and stuff like that at home. And I just think that there are some improvements that can be made to the current system and the test to stay policy and stuff like that that we've got in place currently. So it's just some little things like that that could be tweaked and whatnot. And this would just be a roundtable discussion similar to like what me and Coach Colick had had when we met over in Milton. I don't know if he made you guys aware of it. But great dialogue, great conversation.
Mr. Davis, that's your three minutes. We will have somebody follow up with you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, we will roll right into routine business. I will entertain a motion to accept regular personnel.
So move.
Second, moved by Mr. Colick and seconded by Mrs. Derek. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to accept personnel addendum A.
So move.
Second, moved by Mr. Bradley and seconded by Mrs. Ma Martin. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to accept personnel addendum B as amended. Second, moved by Mr. Colick and seconded by Mrs. Derek. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from December 9th, 2021, and January 13th, 2022. Moved by Mr. Bradley and seconded by Mrs. Ma Martin. All those in favor?
No. Sixteen, so I missed the ninth meeting.
As it's not unanimous, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Mrs. Derek?
No.
Mrs. Ma Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colick?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Motion passes four to one. I'll entertain a motion to accept choice requests from 2021-2022 Good Cause.
So move.
Moved by Mr. Bradley and seconded by Mrs. Derek. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to accept, and wait for this one. Student Discipline Case Number 22-25, 22-26, 22-27, 22-31, and 22-32.
So move.
Moved by Mrs. Ma Martin and seconded by Mr. Colick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Mr. Fulton, Superintendent's Report.
Yeah, just have a few things to mention as part of my superintendent's report this evening. On the 18th of January, was able to attend our chef meeting. We have a great educational foundation that's very supportive of our students and our staff. Obviously, it's obvious tonight with them finding additional money to give a $50 gift certificate to each of our substitutes who are recognized this evening. I went to them with the idea of using sort of a sub for this month versus just a regular staff member. And then not only embraced that idea, but it was their suggestion that, hey, let's get eight more $50 gift certificates and let's give everybody one. So just says a lot about the group and, or currently planning for our spring jam, I guess, instead of winter jam and just a group of dedicated community members who want to help and want to support our kids and do good things for the district. Upcoming, I'll be presenting to Lewis Rotary Club coming this, on January 31st. We have a unified basketball game against Milford on February 1. A boys' basketball game versus Milford on the first as well. And Mariner-Beacon wrestling match will be at the high school on February 3rd. Girls' basketball are playing against Smyrna on the 4th. And that is all I have for things that are happening.
All right. Moving on to our regular agenda, we've got a major capital projects update. Brian and Dean, you guys are up.
Good evening.
Good evening. We'll set up here. Kind of nice, you only have one project to share with you, just Shields. Believe the rest of them to me, but just this one for you.
How are you doing this evening, gentlemen? You doing well? Hang in there. I just wanted to, obviously, I'd like to mention and thank, as we try to, but to really show appreciation for all the work that you all are doing and your teams are doing. Extremely challenging times just with projects and with, you know, delivery of materials. And you guys have gone above and beyond to just try to find ways to make things work and keep our projects on schedule as much as we possibly can. And this is not just one project. You've been doing this the last several years. So just appreciate all you've done to kind of work on our current projects too.
Thank you. Got anything to say? I don't remember where Brian's been.
You know where Brian's been?
Yeah, I don't remember where Brian's been. I didn't say the time of year.
It's on a senior golf tour, I think is what he's trying to do.
It happens, you have 50, doesn't it? We got some change orders this month. The first group is from Milton, the first one's from Carrot Construction. We had to do some additional hydro seating for the den ramp. The next one, they're from Wilson Masonry. There's two of them there that are signed T N M tickets or signed by Field Superintendent. One is from A S I number two. We had a chase wall and the stair towers. And B 406, they worked the pavers around the flag outside. All the groups for SHIELD are pretty much overtime. They're repaying the contractors to try to keep things, you know, on schedule. And, you know, the contractors are doing a great job. They're giving us the manpower that we need to get the job done. It's just, we got to make sure all the materials get there. And, you know, we're really, really moving. Except for the last one, last one's James Town painting, attached tech one to change some wall colors for us, which we greatly appreciate. We worked down in the garage to change. Here's some pictures. As you can see, we got all the base pavement down in December. You know, we were trying to do everything we do to be prepared to basically when spring comes, top out everything. They're starting to work on the main entrance, too, coming off Savannah Road. You can also see that we're getting majority of the sidewalks installed around the building. This is your kitchen. As you see, like the hood and everything is installed. They've painted the walls. They're actually starting to put the ceiling grid into the kitchen. We're planning on putting the floors in there a week from this coming Monday. And just like week of February, we're dropping equipment there. So, you know, we got things lined up as best as we can. This is a shot of one of your two, the classroom, the two-story wing in the addition. All the drywalls in these areas are hung and finished right now. And we have paint in a majority of the rooms. We have paint in 18 of the 24 classrooms. We have ceiling grids at about 15 of the 24 classrooms. This is one of the ones, the flat areas have been painted. I know still a lot of stuff in there, but it's painted. This shows you a classroom that's custom to wall paint and ceiling grid in it. They're starting, they're going to start to drop some plates in these rooms. That's another collaborative that's been painted. See, the next one shows some floor tile. We have the floors and a lot of the rooms. They're really starting to move in these areas. This is one of the single bathrooms, the classrooms. We got, but probably have the ceramic tile in all the bathrooms. They're starting to set plumbing fixtures. This is going to be your, I don't know if it's the library or media center. It changed up. That's going to be the library or media center. This is a shot from the bridge, looking down into like the main hallway. All the drywalls hung in there. They just about have it all finished now, so they're going to start painting there. This is a shot of the elevator. The elevator is all installed. We can't use it yet, but we're getting really close to having it up and running. This is one of your multi-use bathrooms for more than one person going in. As you can see, all toilet fixtures are installed, and they got the toilet partitions. So they're starting to get a lot of finishes into the building. You know, people are working as hard as they can. We're getting the manpower that we can get to the building. This is like a shot of the old main entrance. This is a shot of the classrooms in the existing building. We've accepted our first furniture delivery, pretty much all the furniture is in the building for all the existing classrooms. You know, we're working closely with the furniture people. We got them set up for the third week of March to bring the second delivery. You know, right now, my biggest concern in the building is to get the wood doors there. Our delivery for that is scheduled for March 21st. And if they deliver on that time, I think we're going to be already getting it for spring break. Now, if that slips, we're not going to be okay. But I've been talking to the supplier, you know, constantly. I even often have a financial incentive to see if they could improve that date to March 3rd. I've even asked everything, you know, split the shipment, ship one earlier, ship one immediately. You know, I asked for a first ship to have all the fire doors on there so we can get those up and running. You're often installed. So, you know, we're really doing everything we can do. It's difficult right now. So, you guys got any questions?
Any questions, Mr. John?
So like with inspections and all that, are we going to be okay? You think on your current timeline, do all the inspections that we need to get in?
Yes. Like, we're, right now, we're trying to get electricity and everything, like all the fire alarm system installed. We have the gas company set up. The third week of February, they have gas in the building, and then we're at the H K C units, all fired up. So this, as long as we can get those dates, we'll be already like the fire marshal inspection, then get like a temporary C E O from the city of Lewis. So, and we got a great relationship with the fire marshal. So I feel like, you know, as long as we, you know, get things done, then they will work with us.
Okay, right.
Any other questions for these?
No, I don't have a question. I just want to say, having gone to school in this building and going by every, well, not every day, but at least every other day I've gone by and I've looked at it and I remember being in there and I see the changes that are going on. It's good to be able to see what's now going on on the inside. So I just think you guys are doing a great job, so I just appreciate it. And I'm so glad that the facade of front that's facing Savannah Road is still the same as it was. You know, you kept that. And so that looks really, really good.
Thank you. We appreciate it. And I told Dean when we came in, it was nice that the meeting is here tonight because you get a chance to walk through and go, it's all worth it. The stress is going to pay off. But when you get a few months removed from this and you come and see the final product, you know, the pictures Dean shows you, they're not as exciting as what you walk through here, but the fact that it could look like that in a few months is amazing. I will say that the main reason we even have a chance is because of Richard Rye, Johnson, Dean, and his crew. If you could see the stuff that goes on behind the scenes every day is a situation where we're not going to open on time, and by the end of the day, it's solved and we're still in the game. So, you know, we have one day, we don't have wireless coming. Next day, Dean uses his credit card and we have wireless coming. We, smart boards got pushed back a couple of months and then worked something out with that to get the hardware so we can hang all the hardware up and then pop them in place when they come. The playground was supposed to be installed in November, got pushed all the way back to the third week of March just to get the equipment. So if all those dates hold, you know, the items are going to be there. But every day really is holding your breath on which part or, you know, item we need. The wood doors is a huge one. There's, without the doors, we can't put in the access control. We can't get fire marshal approval. There's a lot of things that that controls. And what I can tell you, if something doesn't show up, we've exhausted every option in the continental United States and probably even a few foreign countries as well. So we're doing everything we can. Time-wise, I told Dean, I said, it feels better when I think that from now until spring break is the equivalent of when our teachers got out at Rehoboth and we had all summer. And you had a lot more confidence when you said, we have all summer to get this done. Well, now, when it says spring break, it feels like it's tomorrow. But time-wise, this is like our summer break. This is where we get pushing everybody. And we're going to make it if everything shows up. Won't be all the way done and pretty like we told you before. We're going to decorate, do a few finishing touches in the summertime. But we want to get everybody in with the ultimate goal of getting that middle school in those times for you. So, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is Legends induction. Call for nominations.
Yeah, we discussed this briefly another meeting. And I let you all know and anyone else that was interested that we would be going through this process. And I think you were sent sort of the advertisement for the Cape Gazette. That's what you have in front of you is what you're going to be using for the Gazette. And for the most part, legends will, the type of person that will be nominated have brought outstanding honor to the school community during their coaching tenure by virtue of their longevity, record of success, and/or other aspects of service to student athletes of the Cape Henlopen School District, which prior to integration and consolidation includes Rehoboth, Lewis, Milton Schools, as well as Jason High School. So potential legends will be retired, will be retired from coaching or are still coaching, will have reached 65 years of age. So this is the information that people will use to decide if they want to nominate. We do this every three years. And we call for nominations in January. That's why we're doing it now. Nomination deadline is March 15th. And the first board meeting after that will bring, I'll come back to you again with what the outcome was of the nominations, which will be March 24th. We could have one, we could have zero, we could have 15 nominations. Based on that, what our procedure is, that you'll determine at that point if I establish a committee to review the nominations or we just make a decision at that meeting. If we do have a committee, then a committee meets, does their work, and we come back to the board in June. And then you all would make the approvals at that time. You have no more than two nominees honored each time we do this. And those who are nominated and selected will be honored at a halftime of a school game this fall. So that's everything we have set up. My chair, it's on the screen there. So you have a copy of what's going to be in the Gazette. We'll be advertising this in several ways. This advertisement will be in the Gazette tomorrow. February 11th, March 4th, and March 11th. We'll also be posting this on social media as well as other, you know, like Twitter, Facebook, those types of things, and it'll be part of the gallery image for our website. So we'll try to get this out as much as we can to everybody and for those people to submit those names to me. I'll bring sort of where we are back to you in March. Are any questions from anybody?
So it says nominating nomination packets, but then it also says supporting documentation. So they just sent a name to you or there's a form that they fill out? They just?
They would send, you know, whatever information they want to provide to us about the person. It could just be a name with a narrative about them. It could be newspaper articles, photos. It could be sort of, that's what sort of the packet would mean. There's no like official form, written form writing like that. Yeah, that's a good question. And we're going to have this sort of in the, we're going to have it in the paper tomorrow, which is already in there. If there's something that we can do to make this more clear in future advertisements, like in these other days, we can maybe tweak a little bit too, maybe. It may be confusing for people, but whatever they'd like to submit, I'd like to have it. And then we'll review it after that March date.
Yeah, I think that will make it clearer as to whether or not there is a form, a district form, plus all the other.
Nomination packet may seem like it's more formal type.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Fulton? With that, we have our next presentation of our secondary add-on programs. Dr. Young, good evening.
Good evening. So, good evening. How's everyone this evening? We are here tonight as a team. I'm working with my amazing principal team, secondary principals, to tell you a little bit about our Avid programming and here at the district and the journey that students experience as they participate in Avid from sixth grade through high school. And so tonight with me, of course, will be presenting, Nicky Miller for the high school, Dave Frederick for Beacon, and Fred Bass for Aver. So just to remind you of what Avid is, Avid stands for advancement via individual determination. It was started in 1980 by a woman named Mary Catherine Swanson out in San Diego. She had a class of 32 students, and her desire was to help some of the students that would be invested into her school who are lower income students to achieve more within the classroom and then beyond the classroom to be able to compete in the academic world. And the original focus was college readiness, but it has expanded to be college and career readiness in the Averan system. So from that 32-student class, there are now over a million students involved in the Avid system throughout the United States and other countries in North America. And it is one of the largest and most comprehensive college and career readiness systems used by schools today. Just to kind of fill you in a little bit more, the philosophy of Avid, which we believe in here at Cape as well, is to hold students accountable to the highest academic standards, provide academic and social support. And the belief is that they will rise to be challenged and be successful in school, high school, and beyond. So this evening, we wanted to focus on some of the things that are happening within Cape, our successes, of course, our challenges that we've been experiencing for the last year and a half or so, some solutions we've come up with, and then some next steps as we look at our Avid system within Cape. So just to kind of give you a glimpse of what we'll be talking about, some of our successes are really expanding that middle school access to our students in the Avid programming at the middle schools despite COVID. So there was an outcome that came tonight. You'll see some of that tonight. Because we chose as a district during COVID to still submit our data to Avid Center, which was not required, but we thought it was important. um, which was not required, but we thought it was important to do. Um, our schools maintain their level, which means of course that Mariner is still a uh, Avid site distinction, which is a nice designation during this time. Um, some of the challenges were some of the supports that we normally get from Avid were either postponed, canceled or reimagined and weren't as um, as a, as I would say supportive. They were still effective and not as supportive as they used to be. One of those being Summer Institute, which we participated each year. We didn't have the opportunity to do that last summer. Um, so we're going to work on something for that this year. And uh, so then the schools, as they come up, they're going to share some of the other solutions that they've come up with over this time and been a little bit innovative to keep Avid programming strong. Um, and then how they even maybe even expanded some of their Avid uh, opportunities for students during this time. So we're going to start with our middle school principals and uh, then we'll follow with uh, Mrs. Miller and we'll close it out and open up to questions.
Good evening. Uh, so I guess Mariner's up first.
It's not where it's supposed to be.
I didn't want to say that.
I'll be your spokesperson.
You can deal with that later. Uh, so the first thing we want to talk about is, you know, in the pandemic, uh, some of our programs took a hit and um, one of the problems we have with Avid was when we did our cohorts, not being able to get kids and mix them. So kind of we had to rethink how we did it. So one of the things that came out of it for us was our Avid one-on-one class. And that's the first thing we have on our slide to talk about. This allowed us to create an Avid one-on-one so that all kids were able to experience the Avid experience. Um, we start, we have two sixth grade sections that are taught by Ms. Kendall and Mr. Hazard. And I do want to take just a moment. Uh, we'd like to introduce our lovely teacher who is the brains behind all this. Ms. Kendall, actually Ms. Andrew is one of our eighth grade teachers who takes care of our Wicker strategies and social society eighth grade. So wonderful people doing a great job. And Ms. Kendall was kind of an influence behind this. Um, we wanted to continue it. We thought, we felt like it was really good that all of our kids got to go through it last year in the pandemic. Um, so we continued this year with our two sixth grade sections. We do have then one seventh and eighth grade Avid one-on-one section that Mr. Hazard teaches. So he gets the team teacher with Ms. Kendall and then he takes it back and teaches it with our seventh and eighth grade. Um, and we combine the fundamentals of Wicker, um, incorporate some of our Delaware compass um, and current college exploration. Uh, and it supported schoolwide by all of our teachers. Uh, we are avid schoolwide. All of our students are avid students, whether they're in the Aver elective, Aver one-on-one. Um, and all of our classes participate in Wicker. If you walk into our classroom, when you come to walk through, you'll see W I C O R on every board and there will be something like, what are we doing with W today? We're writing a reflection of the Civil War. Um, we're doing inquiry, we're doing reading, whatever it is that day, we'll see it on the board. So that's kind of what our Avid one-on-one class.
And some of what you'll hear from me is very similar to what uh, Mr. Best said. We were um, unfortunately had to really scale back our Avid program and, and, and change it, but there were some good things that came out of it. Um, we offered Avid as an exploratory during the pandemic so we could maintain those cohorts at the time. Uh, and um, it, it, when we did it, we were very disappointed that we had to and we were fearful of what would become of the program. Um, what came out of it for us as well is now we, we realized that having all sixth graders continue to do that really does give everyone an exposure to Avid and access to Avid as opposed to having kids in fifth grade interview and go through that process at, based on a presentation. Um, so that was something really good that came out of that. Uh, so we had every sixth grader in our middle school taking Avid this year as an elective taught by Ms. Hughes. We took the students who were in sixth grade um, when we went out originally, brought them back as an eighth grade cohort. They are one cohort in the Avid elective class and Mrs. Hughes also recruited yeah, uh, went out, went after some kids for our current seventh grade. We have two cohorts of current seventh graders right now that are, that are in the uh, Aver elective class all year. Um, Wicker is something that we use as well. And I would say, you know, Avid is about inquiry. It's about being curious about what you're learning and it's about being deliberate about asking questions. And that's what those strategies are about. Uh, and we try to support that as well throughout the school. And one of the main things that you'll see at Beacon is when people are taking notes, they're using the Cornell note taking method. As you, and you know, this is um, some of the things that we're still trying to get back are college visits. Um, prior to this current surge of cases, we had uh, Beacon had a trip uh, planned to go to Dell State. Um, they uh, just sort of, they had to retract that offer. Um, so we're hoping to get some administration from Dell State down to talk to our students um, uh, at some point this year.
And I just, he said, you could see the bottom bullets of all the similarities between the schools. Uh, college visits are a big deal. Um, I know when my kids went through Avid, by the time they got to, they even stepped on a high school, they've been to almost ten college campuses uh, before ninth grade. So we, we really want to get that back, uh, professional development for our staff and Summer Institute. Um, we really would like to get that back. Avid did try to do it digitally. Um, it was not good. Um, and so because of that, then we also now lean on Ms. Kendall, who provides a lot of professional development for our staff, uh, our new teachers who come in. Um, some stuff at the beginning of the year, we do a uh, I call it speed dating. It's not exactly speed dating, but you kind of go around some different sections. She's always one of the sections on it, whether it's Wicker, um, whether it's Socratic seminars, she's always offering some sort of Avid professional development to all of our staff. So some of the successes that we've had at Mariner Middle School with our Avid elective um, group, um, our, our students range anywhere from a uh, academic ILC student all the way up to academic talent student. Um, and you know, Avid is about pushing our student to reach the next level and the next bar. Um, you're thinking, well, for kids in AC, why would they need to be in Avid? Well, part of the Avid philosophy as well is having students in there to model for some of our students, what outcomes you could have if you put, if you do this or you do that. So that's why some of the topper top kids are in there, but we also have full child C kids. Uh, we have every representation of academic level in the program. Um, our staff is trained, like I said, Ms. Kendall does a great job of professional development for our staff. We had, I don't really like this number because it is dropped. Um, eighty percent of, we used to have about eighty-two percent, correct? Eighty-two percent of our professional staff were avid trained through the Summer Institute. Not been a Summer Institute for two years. We had some turnover in staff. So we're at about sixty percent, which is still good. It's still better than the Avid average. Um, but we're hoping to get that back up once Summer Institute gets rolling again. Um, like Dr. Young said, we've earned school-wide cited sinking status since two thousand and sixteen. Um, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe we are the only middle school in the state to receive that. Um, so we're pretty excited about that. Pretty happy about all of that. Um, our students are required to volunteer in the Cape community. Pre-COVID, we averaged over two thousand hours of community service with our avid students. Um, that I'm going to take a little bit of a hit with the COVID stuff, but they volunteer for things like uh, best buddies, uh, the marathons, uh, the Halloween um, trail at the state park. They do a lot of good things within our community and they've actually been recognized from some local publications, as well as our website on those things. I'm an Avid elective student. They receive uh, instructional support, like I said earlier, through Wicker, writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization and reading. Um, and you know, if you think about that, all the things that we're pushing here at Cape, you know, collaboration amongst our students, our new art program with the reading at the uh, secondary level. It all fits into Wicker and what we do on a daily basis um, in all of our classrooms. Um, kind of cool. I actually was in Ms. Kendall's class this weekend, did an observation. I got to see this live and in person. Uh, informal collaborative study groups. Um, we call them tutorials. Uh, they get the mileage, what it looks like to study at college. Um, and they, they start learning that from sixth grade on, uh, and seventh and eighth grade. Um, they research different colleges and it, you know, I do want to make some uh, distinction here. Avid is college readiness, but it's also career pathway and readiness. So it is college and careers, you know, because not everybody is going to go to college. Um, so we also explore different careers that they can go down uh, as well. Um, and they really learn practice and leadership skills. Our honor society president right now, our student council president, they're all avid kids. Um, my daughter who uh, you know, big sports person on the field will elbow you in a heartbeat, will not tell anybody to do anything. Now she's the president of a group and telling kids what we need to be done. And that came from being in the Avid classroom. So it's really cool to see, you know, and in this Aver elective, I also had two boys that went through it and I had a son home at Thanksgiving. And he was studying for a test when he went back on Monday. I looked down, I'm like, what is that? I mean, they're not, I'm like, yeah, but what is that? That's Ms. Kendall. That's Avid. That's Cornell note taking. So you know, his first year freshman didn't, unfortunately didn't take Avid in high school, but four years later still using the process that he learned in the Aver in the middle school. So. And we have a couple of videos for you. Unfortunately, they're not working. Um, but my understanding is you have the presentation. I would encourage you, please, uh, if you get a chance, play them, listen to what they have to say. You'll hear the excitement. You'll hear the enthusiasm in their voices for this program and you hear all the wonderful things and beliefs of why they think it's helping them in the school. So please take a chance and listen to that.
Um, as I mentioned before, we have three sections, three sections of Avid elective in seventh and eighth grade. Uh, one bigger cohort in eighth grade, two smaller cohorts in seventh grade. The majority of our sixth graders are taking it at least as a nine-week course. Um, we have been lucky to be able to get some guest speakers in every month this year. A majority of what we've gotten uh, this year, actually our former Avid students, former kids that went to Beacon, have graduated from high school and are now in college who can come back and relate these, some of the abstract things that we took, that are talked about and how they are still applying them to be successful with post-secondary education. Uh, we did have a paint night last Friday night where we were able to raise almost seven hundred dollars. Um, just to sort of to summarize the um, you know, what the Avid elective is about. It's about being accountable. It's about gaining confidence, even like leadership, like Mr. Best said. It's about public speaking. It's about overcoming some fears. It's about approaching teachers when you don't understand things. It's about understanding inquiry lines for questioning, to ask higher level questions of things that you're learning in class. Um, and I think like, if you look at uh, you could read what Cooper Nathan says here, just about how it has sort of given him confidence, you know, and in, and it's not, you have to work in Avid. You have to buy in and, and when you do, it, it's not, it's not a job. It's not something extra. It, it helps to develop habits and like Mr. Best said, habits that you can carry on when you're taking notes as a freshman in high school.
So uh, what you see in front of you now is kind of our numbers for this year. Um, and you'll see with our Avid one-on-one in sixth grade, we have two hundred, about two hundred and twenty-two kids, you know, give or take on the day. Um, in our building, a hundred and seventy-four of those kids are in Avid. Uh, that's about seventy-eight percent of them. The reason we're not at a hundred is because we do have a year-long classes such as band and chorus. And when we're in sixth grade, we try to get them art in sixth grade if they're in band and chorus, because then we go to five, nine and seventh and eighth grade classes. So um, our B, we also don't want to take away from other uh, things that we have going on. We have a BPA program. So is Dr. Shakhli recognizes them, he tries to get them in sixth grade. Uh, so we're still working through that schedule. We we would love to get them all in there. Um, but what I will say is if we're talking about recruitment and we're looking at numbers, every kid that walks into our building is considered an avid student. Um, they all carry avid binders. They all sell avid academic roadmaps. They all experience Wicker um, in the classrooms. That's what guides our instruction. Um, a lot of our teachers will do some Socratic seminars and tutorials within their classroom. So um, every kid is an avid student. We have some that are in Avid one-on-one. We have some that are actually in the Aver elective. Um, we work to identify the A, the elective candidates uh, to become the Avid student leaders. And some of the ways we do that, this is what I really like about the sixth grade now. Um, with all of them going through Avid one-on-one, it gives our teachers a chance to see them live and in person for that year. It gives Ms. Kendall and Mr. Hazard a chance to see them in the Avid class. Um, we rely real heavily on our elementary teachers and they did a good job, but they don't live, breathe Avid like we do every day. So this gives us a chance to really hone in and identify kids that we, we feel would really benefit from that program. Um, Ms. Kendall will meet with our teachers uh, and start beginning those conversations for next school year with our sixth graders that are going through the program now. The other thing that we've, that we're now using are our watch list. We call it the names behind the numbers. Um, this is where we identify some of our lower TV kids that really feel like we can continue to push with kind of an academic plan. Um, some of those kids on that list may go uh, may get tier two interventions through MTS, but we're really starting to identify the kids in that. And you'll see, I want to jump down real quick to equity and opportunity. You see at the bottom, last year when we used our name behind the numbers list, we recommended sixty-seven kids for our Avid program. We were able to get fourteen of them to actually apply, go through the interview process and actually accepted the Avid invitation. So that was a huge win for us uh, in our first year. Uh, with that, this year we have all the kids, we see them every day. We start with those conversations now so that we can hopefully encourage them to continue the process of applying and going through it, because that's what you need to understand. To be in the Avid elective class, you have to actually, it's like a job. You fill out a application. Really important thing is probably good, you know, group is actually sitting down and interviewing the kid, you know. Hank can really write some good paragraphs, but when you actually sit down and get to talk to the kid, you really get a feel for it. Avid is something that that kid has to want. They have to be, they want to, they need to want to be a part of that program. We consider our fit academic core class. So it's, it's a class that you really want to be in. Um, and so to be successful. Uh, so we're also building relationships. The sixth graders get the taste of it. Um, and then we start this process with our incoming fifth graders when we do our open house in like, in November. Uh, we do a Avid presentation so that they're aware of it, so that they know Avid one-on-one is something they can see on their schedule and hopefully build in the process. Uh, and like I said, the equity opportunity piece, um, we really feel like the name behind the numbers. Uh, we did some more with that this year. Feel like we can grab some more kids off of that and really push them that way as well. So what you see is Avid one-on-one in sixth grade or seventy-eight percent of our kids in it. Seventh grade, we have a hundred and thirty kids enrolled. Um, and then in eighth grade, we have a hundred and forty-eight. We have thirty-four kids right now in our elective class in seventh grade and twenty-four in eighth grade. Ms. Kendall, if you close your ears right now, because she's not going to like what I have to say. We really want to try to double, maybe even triple those numbers. Um, as you move forward, if we had our way and I could clone her, all seven hundred kids would go through the Aver elective because we really believe and what that brings to the table that it benefits our kids majorly. It's been a huge reason that we've had as much success over the last couple of years that we have. So.
Thank you, Mr. Best. Um, similar to what Mariner does, um, you know, evolving and improving recruiting kids again, like coming. There's actually some good stuff that came out of the pandemic and one of the changes that we made was offering Avid to every sixth grader, not offering it, we scheduled that virtually every sixth grader. Um, we still are uh, you know, talking to the elementary schools. We, we have a table at our open houses. We'll be out visiting the elementary schools uh, this spring with our teachers and some of our students. We have some of our eighth grade students who will go down and speak to our sixth graders as well, who have been exposed to the nine-week course. And this, it serves a dual purpose. It recruits kids and it gets these kids in public speaking uh, and it helps them build their confidence. Um, we do an interest survey. We send out a, a little survey through our homeroom to teachers and kids that would be interested in Avid so we can follow up with them. And Avid is part of a discussion when we're talking about kids and their needs and how they're doing. And uh, and, and it is sometimes something that we will recruit a kid into or recommend or call the parent about. Um, our teacher, she's not here tonight, Nicole Hughes. Um, she's, you know, very like Ms. Kendall, very passionate about this. Um, it was very difficult for her to have to step away when we did that last year. Um, and I have to commend her. Um, and I have to commend her for how she handled it, for what she made of it and where it's headed now. Um, she's got high expectations for her kids, uh, she's got high expectations for the program, for me, um, for anybody she deals with, uh, and we're very fortunate to have her.
I think a testament to any good program is when your administrators' children go through it. And all three of us have had kids who went through the avid program. So whether it was in middle school or in high school, so that's, that's awesome. Um, avid high school elective is a little bit different. Um, because they've already, for the most part, some have done middle school, some maybe just joined it in high school. So these are some of the things, I won't read the slide to you, but these are some of the things that they do throughout the elective. Just some statistics here, since 2016 to 17, 100% of the seniors have actually applied for a four-year college and with a 96% acceptance rate, so that's, that's a really high acceptance rate. These are some of the numbers. Um, what I'd like for you to look at is the top piece here. So Dave and Fred both mentioned about like the middle schools and how the change of the pandemic. And if you see um, in 2122, we actually have the highest number, so that's really a great thing. You can see the breakdown of our students here. Okay, so this is actually something really new. Um, I don't know if you have heard about this, but uh, the Leadership Academy, particularly, excuse me, sorry, um, is something that we've actually implemented within this year. And um, sorry, I'm bringing Mr. Gregory, so I was supposed to be presenting these five accounts. So for this, this is something, they actually do these leadership models and they come in and every single month they have a module. So the 10th and 11th graders have been doing this, and you can see, these are a couple of the quotes that they have there. Um, this is our, and this is only AP classes that are represented in our avid students. And you can see that this is actually an area for us to improve, to be able to track our enrollment and honors. We don't currently do that and we want to be able to add those numbers to it. And then this is our areas for our focus and our next steps. So one thing that we want to do is we want to be able to um, really look at the rosters of the classes and see what classes are our kids taking beyond just AP. So where are they taking those, well, the, those Delta classes and what kind of honors courses are they taking as well? But also they could point out that if you look at, this is last year's data that we recorded, Dr. Young mentioned that we didn't have to report this data, but we chose to. And you can see that even in a pandemic year, um, which we're still in. But um, last year when so many of the students are remote, we still had three ninth grade kids taking an AP class that were in avid. So to take an AP class when you're possibly a remote student or only two to three days a week, that's, that's awesome. Um, and I really know, I know that our numbers are higher and I'm sorry that they weren't representing this chart. So. All right, recap our next steps, um, this is Dr. Young, sorry.
Okay, so I hope tonight that you had a view into how passionate our principals are about the avid system. Um, a couple of things that I wanted to point out is that even though um, we've had some to shift gears a little bit during COVID, we have remained committed to the philosophy of, of avid and in cave as well, that holding students accountable to a high academic standard. We maintained that throughout the pandemic. And then we provide academic and social support to the extent that we can during these times. So we're still keeping that philosophy in mind. Um, also, I just want to let you know that we're setting some specific avid goals for ourselves this year. One of them being that we're going to set um, a recruitment goal. So how many students we're going to get into the programming at middle schools and high school and how we're using the data to figure that out. Uh, we also want to reinstitute summer institute, so if we cannot do something through avid, we want to do something in district that's very similar to that, so we have the opportunity to work together and do that uh summer PD, that's really important to keep that program strong and, and moving forward. And we have implemented, um, Ms. Naaman has started a couple of years ago, uh, a data system that we've all been looking at as administrators throughout the district to really analyze our students and their achievement and areas that we can improve. And so we're using that data for a lot of things, but it's really going to be impactful for our avid system as well. To think about, okay, so which students are we missing, which students could really benefit from this, from that district point of view and help the, the schools identify those kids that are doing a great job. Uh, but having those conversations really uh is important. Um, one of the things I'd like to point out that Mr. Best alluded to is that avid is a voluntary system. So students should really want to be part of the system. We can encourage them and we can identify them, but it's really important that they want to be there. I think that's one of the strengths of the program. Um, and our teachers are definitely teachers who want to be in, so they're in it to win it for sure. Uh, so that's really where we are as far as what we need to do in the next, I would say, six to 12 months with avid. And we'll be able to report on these goals and, and what we're doing, especially in the area of recruitment. Um, it, when we, when we talk to hopefully at the end next year.
Any questions for Dr. Young or any of our principals?
So this one, this, my question isn't directed to uh Dr. Young at this time, okay? But I did want to address the two middle school principals. And I know that we both have middle schools that are twins. I just want to know who put, who started wearing the glasses on the head first? Mr., oh, that's what I thought, okay. Oh, okay, all right.
Yeah, Mr. Fred, he has sunglasses on top of his head there.
Okay, my, my other, and once again, this isn't a directive to you, Dr. Young, but I certainly do know that pre-COVID, I had the opportunity to go into Mariner Middle School to be at Beacon. And I must say, the, at, once you walk through the doors, you knew that you were in an avid school. Uh, you could see the excitement from the kids, you could see the commitment by the teachers. And so it is a school-wide thing, and I believe that's what it has to be. I just know that it probably should be a continuum. And, and I would hope that that is something that we're doing, that it moves from middle school straight up through high school. And I know that, and I guess my question now to, to you, uh, Dr. Young or to uh Ms. Miller, is that if it is a continuum and it's something that we see that is successful and it is effective and it works for our kids. And I know that wicker is used in both of the middle schools. I, I just want to, is it a contin- continuum throughout the high school? Is that something that has had, I know you spoke a lot about AP classes and I, I think that's great, what's happening with the AP classes, but is this atmosphere that the thought of avid why, school-wide?
Yeah.
And these things are, wicker is taking place in the classrooms throughout the school. Because it, to me, it seems like if, if we're doing it in middle school and as successful as the two middle schools are, then we should want to make sure that we're continuing that as the kids move on to high school and that they continue with the Cornell notes, they continue with the Socratic discussions. Those things are taking place in all the classrooms. We walk in and it is an avid school.
Yeah, so I was actually lucky enough before COVID um, to be the Delaware representative for um, the regional avid principalship, which was really an awesome experience. And we definitely do wicker, but we do more than, we absolutely do the Cornell. We do the Socratic seminars, but um, all of our 10th grade kids actually get through academic enrichment, a piece of that. So every single um, one of our core teachers has been trained beyond that. But it's not just wicker, we do all the different strategies throughout the school, for sure.
Okay, and, and that's, that's what I, I want to hear, that's what I, I think is important, that there be a continuum, that we just not, you know, we have our kids at the middle school and they're gung ho and they're getting the best and they are excited only to move on and to find out that maybe that's not exactly what's happening.
Yeah, and what you also see is a lot of our avid kids aren't the same ones from middle school. So, so a lot of times the ones we have in high school, it's their first experience. So you're getting even more kids who didn't get a chance to do, they didn't take it in middle school, but they heard about it, got to high school, selected it, and then were like, oh wow, this is really cool. So because of the experiences they're getting in middle school, they're choosing it as one of their very few electives at the high school. So yes, absolutely.
I'd be interested to find, uh, obviously it's great for college readiness. I'd be interested to find out the feedback from kids that go to the career path rather than going to the college route, how avid helped them in getting started with their careers. I know you probably don't have that information, but at some point it'd be interesting to kind of circle back to those kids and find out how, how it worked for them going into the career and into the workforce.
And I think one of the big tie-ins that we're trying to connect a little bit more to our avid students is within the state itself, when we're working on our student success plans, which have been rebranded, but basically just the, when the students are looking at what they want to do after high school, all that plays into college career. And then the avid teachers for sure certainly bring that to the students as well and help them explore that and discuss that. Uh, one of the things that we did that was more of a college-based, but the high school, um, I went over and had the opportunity to be with the kids as they did in virtual college tour through, through avid. And basically, they set up different um colleges that students could connect to and talk to virtually, get to know about the college. And there's a lot of things we're doing with work-based learning through our, uh, our school counselors that we want to connect through the avid elective class as well, as well at the high school. And that's a building program that really will be more full for us this year. We're in kind of the first year of implementation, but that will be a true connection to avid. And we'll have more of that information for career readiness and career opportunities um, through CTE and avid and work-based learning. So those connections are really important to us. Um, and they become more and more important to avid because they have shifted to the college and career readiness and not just the college readiness.
Great, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Thank you so much, guys, to all of you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the 2223 district calendar, I couldn't believe it when I saw this on the agenda.
We have there the district days and hours, and let's just go a recap, just to help refresh your memory. If you look at that one, uh, the student hours, you need 1,060 hours for kindergarten through 11th grade. 12th graders need 1,032 hours, just as a reminder. The staff need days, so the professional staff need 188 days in the calendar. The paras need 185 and everybody else gets about 170 days. So that's just to kind of give you an idea of what we need to meet requirement-wise. So if I can uh direct your attention to the calendar for families, there are two in there that we uploaded. One was more of an internal document just for our staff, just so we can keep track of that, but the families, we put them all with families. So if you take a look, we'll just get out in the left column, July, July 4th is on there. And then you get down to August, you can see August 26th, we're going to start a professional development days for staff, just as we did in the past, it's very similar to the end of August. And we added the meet the teacher nights on there from the middle to the high end of the elementary, so you can see it. And there's also a meet the teacher night for the Sussex Consortium on the 6th. So I just want to draw your attention to September 6th, because that's a little different. A lot of years in the past, we started right after Labor Day, but last year we did because it was a Jewish holiday. And that ended up being really well, people thought that was super effective. It gave transportation more time to work out all the kinks for transportation, late registrants coming in. There was more training for the support staff and the educators. So we just thought, if we could do that again and start on the 7th, the Wednesday, that seems like a, a popular push to make it more successful for everyone, just a nicer start to the school year. So that's one thing that's slightly different. And then we have very consistent days through a week, I mean, through September and October, just for consistency for the students and the staff. In October, we did put the Cape Proud Nights on there, just so people know they're after school, the elementary, the middle of the high school, uh, those three days. And then when you go to November, it gets a little bit messy, because Election Day is that second week, along with Return Day and Veterans Day. So because of that, we thought that week's pretty messed up anyhow, we'll have the students come Monday and on the 9th, we'll make that the parent teacher conference day. Normally that was right before Thanksgiving, but we thought we'd stick it in there just because then it's like a consistent time, the families want to vacation, do other things. It just kind of works all clumped together. And then we get a solid week in the third week, so the consistency for students and staff. And then we'll actually go to school the two days before Thanksgiving, just because we need the hours and the days. And then Thanksgiving, three days. And you get down to December, goes straight through until December 22nd, and then that's a break. And then we'll jump over to January, pretty similar again, we start after New Year's Day as observed on the 2nd, since it's on a Sunday this year or that year. And then Martin Luther King Day off. And then when you get down to February, we have a four-day weekend of a professional development day for the staff, a president's day for no one, so there's four-day weekend there. And then March, we have the evening parent teacher conferences on there, and they are staggered. So like that starts high school, elementary, middle, as opposed to the Cape Proud Nights, whatever, different. We just try to stagger it different nights for different groups of families. And then on spring break, you can see is the second week of April. And then we get down till May, and toward the end of the 26th, there is actually a professional development day for the staff. The students would have a four-day weekend, a royal day weekend. And then we have commencement that first Tuesday in June, and the last day of school ends up being June 9th. And we did put the uh, professional development days for staff there in June. And Juneteenth was added now, because that is now a recognized holiday. So the other calendar you have is for staff, but that's more internal, so everybody knows when their in-service days are and uh, all the professional development days, but the families, this is way easier for them to read and just see what the families need to know, like all the red dots are the days that they're off, or the red squares. So any questions in this first presentation?
Questions or comments from Mr. Black?
Um, I'm noticing that the parent teacher conferences are going to be on November 9th, where this year they were on the 21st and 22nd. But I see it's hard to do that this year um, with having so many days off around the elections.
It is just this year, I don't think normally we'll go back to that November 1st, because that was nice to have it that way, but it just seemed like the only way to get consistency for the students.
That's what I was wondering, I, I felt like I heard positive feedback about that, but I was just wondering if, if you think you'll go back to that, I see how it's hard this year.
That's the intention, I think it is too, whatever it has been talking about. And I put the history, there's a historical thing in there, if you look at that, it shows the last five years, what we did, so you could see. I did notice there's one mistake in that, I just saw it before I came up here. It's really, there's three days for the seniors, June 1st, 2nd, 3rd. I had the other one off, so I'll fix that for the next time. That's just in case we need to make up days. And there's always extra hours built into this schedule, so if we have snow days and things, it's not going to affect the schedule right away. The students actually have 1,105 hours under schedule, so like 45 hours more than they need. So that's always built in consistently each year.
Um, they're usually, since I've been on the board, is a professional development day in uh January, in addition to Martin Luther King Day. Did you need to, um, did you feel you couldn't put that in there because of, again, November elections?
Yes, and we needed the hours for the year, just to have some of those extra hours at the end, so we did take that one out.
Do the same amount of professional development days as this year?
I think it pretty much is the same, it might be one less, I can't quite recall, it might be one less. Oh no, I know what it is, it's the, the 6th, the, at the beginning of the year, we put it at the beginning year, that's what happened.
According to the um, timeline chart, 2122 had 15 number of PD days for teachers and this next year will be 16, so there's one additional PD day.
You know, according to this, we put a whole lot at the end there, see the end? To get the teacher days in there too, so there's more professional development days at the end. We had, we originally had the students ending on a Monday and that just seemed terrible. Seems like not a good day to come back just for one day in the week. So we made it the Friday and we made it a professional development day for the staff.
Is the last student day a full day?
Yes, we were keeping everything full days, because the half-days are really challenging for transportation, everybody's schedules. So we just thought it's a lot easier when everything's full days. It's less disruptive to all the systems, you know, routines.
It's just a change from previous, so, which is good.
And will you do professional development at the end, in June, you'll do that when it runs?
Yes, it's June 12th through the 16th week.
And everyone's like packing up their rooms, there's, is it like burden?
There's actually a professional development does go on at the end of the year, like the activities that we do. And then there is the pack up, the paras leave a little bit before the teachers do, one day less. And I'll bring this back again to you also, yeah, but it's just like the first review of it.
Any extra or any additional questions or comments from Mr. Black? We'll see you back next week.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
And, and keep in mind, it can, contractually too, that, you know, the, the staff receives so many days, they're called, you know, workdays. And keep in mind, it can contractually too, that, you know, the the staff receives so many days are called, you know, workdays. So there's no PD can occur. They have to be given time to work in the rooms to take things down or set things up and those kind of things, begin the school year and the end of the school year. So part of the that week of the twelfth, part of that time would have to be for that purpose. It's not labeled that way, but.
Next on our agenda is board policy two zero seven, school choice program.
Yes, let me get to that quickly here. And this has come to you for the second time, I believe, and it was a modification earlier this year. The board viewed policy and decided that we would follow the same sort of guidelines we have in the past for sort of cutoff because we are at capacity and continue to grow that we would have have to make some tough decisions around school choice because we receive so many school choice applications that we just can't accept because we don't have the space to do so. And primarily, those are for students and families who live outside of our district attendance boundaries. If you live in Milford or you live in Greenwood or you live wherever, if you aren't in the Cape District, then we said no to those families in the past and we want to continue to do so. One thing we run into a little bit of a challenge with when we're looking at school choice applications is that you know, we we think it's important for consistency with students and, you know, we we have a lot of kids that are in our schools from kindergarten through eighth grade or ninth grade or tenth grade, and they just happen to move a few miles away and they're in different districts and you know, that would mean that they would have to go to another district for the last year and a half or those kind of things. And and in many cases, we don't think that's the best thing for the student or for us because, you know, I think it's it's important for them to kind of finish with us. And we've done that in the past. We also have the other part of it, which we have a lot of families moving here. And but they only move or live in the district for six months. Or they live in the district for a year or sometimes three years, you know, different times. And then they move somewhere else into a different district. And what we've been doing in the past is once the student lives in our district and resides and they move out, as long as they're in good standing with attendance, behavior and those types of things, we allow them to stay as a school choice student as long as those things continue to be, you know, adequate. We've had so many of those recently that we kind of wanted to bring to you a suggested change to our policy. Because, you know, I I don't think that somebody who comes here for six months and rents something for six months within our boundaries, then moves to a different district should have the same right as somebody who's been here for a longer period of time. And we're becoming, we're increasing, our student population is increasing so quickly that we have to be we have to be more selective, but we have to be consistent in the way in which we make decisions about school choice as well. So the revision that was brought to you last last time was you know, was looking at students who have resided within our district boundaries for two years or more or two years or less. So it's divided, you know, we had kind of, you could have broken it down a lot of different ways. One year, two years, five years. We could have taken a few more steps in there. We just thought to start, we would recognize those families and students who have lived within our attendance boundary for two years. For 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 two years or more. So if a student is with us for two years and they move out, if they want to stay, we would permit them to stay as long as they had good attendance and, you know, behaviors and those types of things. But if we had a family moved here from wherever, out of state, in-state, and they were only going to Beacon or Mariner or Shields for three months or six months or nine months, and then they moved to Indian River or Milford, and they say we want to stay in school school choice. That would be the family we would say, sorry, you have to reside here to attend here. So it just divides it differently.
I find that confusing because what if they live here for two years exactly? What are they, six or they have seven? Because we both say two years more or less, so should it be more than two years and less than two years rather than the two-year mark? Because like, it could be six or seven, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, two years or more, which to me means two years, two years and one day, three years, ten years.
Well, it says two years or more, two years or less. So two years is the the
I got you. Well, I understand, I understand. Less than two years, two years or more or less than two years. I understand.
The same, aren't seven and six and seven the same?
No.
One has the word more, one has the year less, but two years exactly is in both of them, so they can't be that way, what you're saying. Because that's there to just be, you know.
I've been for two years.
Yeah.
That's a good point, Jason. I think we need to change the semantics on one of them.
I think it should be two years or more or less than two years is what it should be.
That would work, yeah.
First one would be two years or more. And number seven would be less than two years.
Mr. Fulton, this is on our agenda as an action item. When do you perceive this needing to be enacted?
Obviously, we, you know, the sooner the better. We're we look at applications all the time and there are families that move out of our district throughout the year even. So I think the sooner the better to, you know. And I think this is something that, you know, is going to be work in progress too. It may be the next fall when we kind of start reviewing the other things we review as far as the the guidelines and where to cut it off, we may come back with a tweak to this too, based on feedback and from our office, Ms. Vickers and others who have to work through school choice. It is, really is amazing between enrollment enrollment and school choice, like questions and parents, and it's amazing how much of the day is taken up with those two topics because people want to be here, which is a good thing. But I do feel that people who live here and have, you know, who live in our communities should have an advantage over others. And although we do receive school choice money from those districts, it's not the same as somebody living here and paying taxes within our district.
So we can.
So I'm I'm recommending that we take action on this this evening as amended with six being two years or more remaining the same as it is now and how it's written and seven would be less than two years.
Then I will entertain a motion to accept the changes to board policy two zero seven as amended. This is Will Martin, second by Mr. Collett. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is board policy two fourteen homework. Dr. Young, welcome back to the mic.
Good evening again. I'm here this evening to bring forward our policy two fourteen for a an update. We, as we implemented the new policy, we have been working with the Implementation and Progress Committee on doing reviews and and refining some of our work. And as we went through the policy and as it's been implemented at the secondary level, we felt that there was a statement in there that was more of a procedural type of statement or a strategy than actual policy. So we're asking to strike the sentence from the policy. We still support the message that's stated within it, but we felt that that would be more of a instructional tool. So within the policy, under the secondary guidelines, point three, the statement create a learning environment that provides clear expectations and multiple supports for completion of homework would remain. But we do ask to remove homework will be considered completed if students include a reflection that describes what they understood but they didn't understand and or why they were not able to complete the given homework assignment is something that a teacher could implement within their classroom. So we thought, leaving that first statement as a policy type of statement. We wanted to clean that up. This is the first reading of this change.
Questions for Dr.?
I'm curious, just, so this was feedback from the teachers?
Yes.
Are, were they finding, students finding that as a loophole, like not doing their homework and saying, well, I didn't understand it? So it still gets counted?
No, not necessarily. It just, it just seems like there are other strategies that they use to get kids to do their homework and it it really doesn't seem to be that necessary to actually state it in the policy because they may offer that to students within their classroom, like if, you know, if you have difficulty, the teacher would accept that type of statement. But this kind of restricts it because there are other strategies that can be used to encourage kids to complete their homework. I don't think there was any abuse involved with it. It just seemed like something that was more limiting than than it needs to be in a policy.
You'll bring us back to us next time? I'm sorry, did I cut anybody off with any additional comments or questions?
Well, thank you very much.
Moving right along. New middle school final design and specifications. You're up here for a while, sir.
Some of them are short, though. Don't ask a lot of questions. Well, Mr. Williams sends his apology. He's not able to join us tonight, but I did want to thank him anyway. The trends that they cranked out in the timeline that they've done it is really amazing. So everything we were telling you about Shields trying to stay on schedule right behind it is trying to get the middle school out to bid in March hopefully so that we can get ahead of the wage rate increase and save a few dollars there. But to do that, you know, the agency approvals that we used to be able to get done in sixty days are, you're, everybody's backed up because of all the construction in the project. So we're trying to stay ahead of it and ABAJ is just knocking it out of the park with the timeline and to get to a hundred percent of the drawings at at this stage is fantastic. So it's really, you've been through this enough with me. This is a formality for us. You've seen the design. We showed you all the pretty pictures, just what we need for the audit trail to show you that we're submitting to hopefully go out to bid here soon. So we've completed design. We have most of our agency approvals and at this point, we need to just show you what we have and what's in the pipeline. And just like all of our other projects, you've approved us before we get all of the agency approvals, as long as we're in the pipeline. We will have a few remaining design items as we go along, not as many as in the past, but, you know, we've already picked out colors for this building. But if we decide to do some wall murals or art, we'll bring that back to you. Or if we make any design changes as we move along, but for the most part, you've seen the the finished product. So the fire, the final approvals that we currently have, we did get fire marshal approval last week for the site and the building. We have DOE's approval. We got the health department last week. And we have a city of Lewis conditional improvement, which is our approval, which is all we need at this point in time. And we'll we'll get the last few. We have a few remaining things with Denrec and some items, and then we'll get the final from them. All of our other agencies, DFM, Denrec, Del Dot and the accessibility ward all have been submitted. All are any day, you know, pending type of situation. So we will have all of those as well before we go out to bid. And then again, just for the audit trail, we have a few images of those approvals. In the past, we brought the head spec to you for final approval, but when I looked at it, we were way ahead of schedule. You approved the head spec in November of two thousand twenty. So that part's already done. It's just in here as a formality. Some new information for you is regarding our budget. So again, as we're fighting the timeline with Louis Elementary, the other thing we're fighting behind the scenes is we don't have enough money to build what we showed you and what we need to provide based on the certificate of necessity. The good news is, as of today, I think we have the money. We'll see how the next few weeks go, but we we currently have forty-one million, five hundred forty-four thousand, one hundred dollars to build this middle school. Thirty-nine point five million of that was funded from the referendum. If you have a great memory, we transferred two million dollars from the other projects. The same time that we did that, we transferred extra money to protect us at Shields. And thanks to Dean and company, we still have about eight hundred thousand in contingency at Shields. And some of that will be eaten into as we make these emergency purchases to get that building open. But I believe we're going to have more money left over there to transfer to the middle school as well, but that's helping our our cause as well. So with that forty-one million, the last estimate from R Y J was that we were seven million to thirteen million short. Seven million was the base bid, which did not include athletic fields, and I'll show you that in a moment. If you wanted everything the way we showed you, the undercoating and all that good stuff, it's about thirteen million. So what we did was we we asked the state for eleven point five because one, we always appreciate that R Y J seems to get a nice low bid here and there on bid day. We've always been able to beat the estimate. So we're kind of banking on that. And there's maybe a few alternates that, even though we would really like to have them, if it doesn't happen with the crazy budget, we understand that. So this week, the House Bill three-ten was approved for the mini bond bill in January. And there's language in there to fund us eleven and a half million dollars. That's the good news. The bad news is the language still shows a state-local split. So we're working with Mr. Gums on our local split for that, which we believe we can generate from our past referendums, but we're also at the same time going back to the state to ask for it to be a hundred percent state. We have the admission for that. They approved a hundred percent state for the contractors to get that extra money during COVID last year. Well, that's what's driving the bid price up now. And there's also a lot of money available in the state budget if you read the newspaper today. So we are hoping that we can convince them to make that change, but the original fear was we weren't going to find out about this until July. And then we have to get real creative because if I don't start the school until July, you're not going to open in time. So getting it in the mini bond bill keeps us on schedule. And now we'll work on getting the the amendment maybe to that local match done before July and then maybe we'll have some good news for you on that.
Sixty, forty. And and we are in this with Indian River as well. Apo is involved, but they have a slightly different situation there. But all of our efforts and communications are working together with Indian River with the same exact situation with some of their bids and and needing the money and not thinking it's fair that the the local share should be involved.
Yeah, they are very much in support of that local match going away. The other district that's involved in this is Apple Quinamick. I don't know the exact number that they were approved for, but they opened their bids already and they're about two and a half million over what they already asked for. And the state is, hasn't guaranteed it, but they're going to work with them. That's a good thing for us to see because if we get to bid day and we supply our bids and we go slightly over this eleven and a half, if they gave to Apo to make up the difference, then hopefully they can do the same for us. So getting a little bit more sleep about the budget and we'll keep our fingers crossed. Our list of alternates, we we try to keep it short so it doesn't scare the bidders away. We're down to thirteen. And the the biggest one is the three classrooms at the end of the building. So the the renderings you saw did not show these three rooms as alternates. These are three classrooms that we have to have in order to beat the size of the building that we're supposed to build. But it was our parachute, just in case if we didn't get that many bond bill money. So I'll show you how it looks. And at this point, the drawings are already done for it, so we would suggest leaving it in there just so that you could award the base bid, start the building, stay on schedule and we could go fight to get the funding for those three rooms later, which is exactly what we did with the consortium. So I'll show you what that looks like in a moment. Our athletic fields at both sites, the other two sites, Lewis Elementary and Fred Thomas are alternate. The HPL panels, that's those metal panels that kind of look like wood texture around the building. On the gym side, we thought, you know, that's not really a prominent side of the building. We'll make that an alternate if we have to. And it would be brick or block if we weren't able to get that alternate. In the inside, we have the ground face block. If you're familiar with the high school addition, we did inside. There's that nice glazed color block in the main hallway of the addition. It holds up better. It looks better. So we added that as an alternate. We have a lot of flooring, alternates, wood gym floors, razzo flooring in the cafeteria. All of these are flooring upgrades that would help us in the long term and also help our maintenance team. But if the money wasn't there, we could do, you know, vinyl tile like everyone else has done in a lot of the schools. The auditorium, we'd like to do a catwalk in a sound booth, but we've made that an alternate. And then the other three are all site amenities. We showed the boardwalk across the pond and some of the walking trails. Again, we want that, but we're just going to protect ourselves and get it, put it down as an alternate. So the three classrooms that I would show you, have a great memory, the the view, this is from the blockhouse side pond of the building. It used to go all the way to the right on a the brick and then those HPL panels across the top, which we did was run that vertical tan column to the far right and we put the stair tower on the other side of that and then three rooms are next to it. So all we did was take the stairs from the edge of the building, moved it inside. And this is what it would look like if we get the classrooms. If you don't get those classrooms, you could just kind of hide it with your hand. You would lose the brick in that big window to the right and you would have the stair tower there. By doing it this way, the stair goes there no matter what. So if we were six months into construction, we could always still add those classrooms on when the funding arrived. Getting that word on the mini bond bill, I don't think we're going to have to worry about this. I believe those rooms will be there and they'll look like that. And honestly, Brian and I, Williams and I both think it almost fits better with that being the narrowest side of the property. It kind of scales it back as you turn the corner around to the parent jungle. So sometimes you you get lucky with those things. Just an image of the site plan. We haven't moved anything from your last approval. The building's in the same spot. The athletic fields are all in the same location. And you'll remember the track at the top of the building, at the top of the site plan at Fred Thomas Building. That's just going to be stone to match. That's just going to be stone to match Beacon and Mariner. There was talk we'll get an alternate, do a paved track, but we'll, we'll do that down the road at the same time. Maybe Beacon and Mariner could address that as well. And then just an image reminding you of that common space and what the general floor plan looks like. So I always joke about this and I know some, one of these days you guys will probably do it to make you feel better, but with my glasses off, I can't see. But I think there's about a thousand pages of prints on one of these. I only gave you the cover page to show you that I've uploaded all that for your reading pleasure. But it's pretty impressive what ABAJ was able to put together. They have all the specifications into two different packages and also, again, I can't see it, but it's somewhere between three and 500 pages, I think, for both of them. All those, I can tell you, you know, I've looked through pretty much all the pages. It's the same specifications. At this point in time, we know what kind of bathroom fixture we want. We know what type of LED lighting. So we've kind of rolled that over from project to project and we feel very confident. I feel very confident that the specs match exactly what we wanted to build. So what's next for us is we have to advertise for bid. Once we get that bid date, we'll get an approximate start date for construction, which is dependent on Shields going into Lewis Elementary and then doing the asbestos abatement. But we need to bid before March 15th. We don't need to award right away. Probably could bring it to you in April for our award of the bids and that would keep us on schedule. So I'll take any questions you may have and after the questions, I would recommend approval of the middle school 100% construction documents as presented.
Any questions or comments from Mr. Bassett? All right, I will entertain a motion to accept the new middle school final design and specifications 100% documents. Did I say that all right? As presented by Mr. Bassett. Moved by Mr. Bradley and seconded by Mr. Colick. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is our property line, property lot line adjustment.
We got through the long ones. So these are the short ones. We brought this to you before. We had that issue at the edge of the property, leaving current Shields Elementary with the garage down there and to correct it, there's a couple of lines on your drawing. The green line is our current property line. The red is the new property line we like to draw. And this does a lot of good for us. It gets rid of all that water that almost ices up at the end of the driveway. It has zero effect on our new road right above that red line. That's the new driveway. That red line is on a little bit of our existing driveway, just to give you some bearings on where this is. And the garage has used this for the last 50 years. So they, they didn't even realize that they didn't own there. And when we talked to them, they had no problem doing this adjustment with us. So we've got through all the legalities. Finally, we have, I've uploaded for you the legal descriptions and all of the tax documents and revenue documents that need to be signed. And if everything is approved tonight, Ms. Bickers does have the document that we need to sign, the garage by, by a few of you. And we can get that at any time. It's not a rush. We can get that next week. But nothing has changed. It's just taken us the last few months to get with the lawyer and the property owners. And we did have to go through the city of Lewis to get them to approve this before we could bring it back. So I would recommend approval of property line adjustment as presented. And if they answer any questions first, if they have any.
Questions or comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept the new middle school property lot line adjustment as presented by Mr. Bassett.
So move.
Moved by Mrs. Mal Martin and seconded by Mrs. Derek. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I will sign this for you tonight, Mr. Bassett.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Next up is our change orders.
Yeah, change orders. Dean covered all of them. The only one I have to point out to you is the first one listed under Milton Elementary School for Tech to Tech. It's a credit for $3,744. So as we are finally winding down the punch list, any money that was left on their contract for time and material are reimbursables. We'll get back. This is the first portion. I will be bringing another one to you. It looks like we're going to have quite a bit of money left on our civil engineering side, somewhere between 10 and $20,000. So that will help us get a few items that we'll just still ask them for, that we didn't have money for, that we'll get when that comes back. So other than that local change, what are the rest are all the ones that Dean reviewed with you earlier? So I would recommend approval of the change order memo as presented.
Second. Moved by Mrs. Derek and seconded by Mr. Bradley to approve the change orders as presented. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And last but not least on your.
All right, one more.
Shields Elementary demo and site demo bid results.
Yeah. I don't know if you're like me, but all of these start running together for Shields because, you know, we did abatement twice in the old Lewis building within the new Shields.
Torn it down three times or something.
I know. Torn it down three times. We really did it right on the board. This one is finally for, you know, we did the asbestos abatement for the old Shields building. So as soon as they're done, we would start this. So we've got a few months before this would begin. But this would tear down the existing Shields building and the site work that's listed, we, we split apart for this one because it's not as much site work that usually occurs with a demo. We don't actually want them to fill the hole back in because we want to start construction of the middle school right behind it. So if we scaled that back down, we saved us a few dollars, we can fence some things in and then we'll take up the bulk of the site work with the middle school project. So unlike the other bids across the state, these came in lower than we projected, which is great. And when we talked to both of them, they said, you know, for the site guy and the guy knocking down the building, there's not a lot of parts he needs to order in the supply chain right now. He owns the, you know, the wrecking ball. So the prices were coming in fairly normal for us. It is a company that we worked with before F R Benke. It is misspelled for the fifth time, I think, but it's correct on the recommendation page. So just have it with you for that. But F R Benke tore down Rehoboth Forest. It's the same company that did that. And they gave us between the base bid and alternate a price of $363,000. And then for the site demolition, it's Carol Construction, who's also done many projects for us, including this one here at Hilton, for a good price of $231,137. So if we combine both of those together, our line item for demo and sites 594, we had budgeted a million dollars, which was based on past projects. So this is, you know, a couple hundred thousand more that will go into that protecting us for the middle school project. So we've been fortunate that every time we do a project, we push it to the next one to protect us. If we get through the middle school and we don't need some of that, then you'll have some there to make some decisions with, or maybe some of the other projects we talked about at a former board meeting. So those are pretty straightforward. I would recommend awarding those to contracts as presented.
So move. Moved by Mrs. Derek and seconded by Coach Colick. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bassett.
All right, thank you.
And that was quick. That was pretty good.
Hey, my, my, maybe, you know, don't, don't hold your breath, but maybe I won't even see you for a couple of board meetings. We're going to go finish up Shields and we'll come back and show you what it's all done. It's going to be the hope. So.
But we'll miss you. So maybe you just come back and let us know how things are going.
But I won't, I won't take up the time for it.
Thank you, Brian. All right. Next on our agenda is the FY 22 monthly financial statements for December.
Yes. So for the monthly financial statements, obviously you have the report in front of you. I want to point out that we've collected 95.6% of our discretionary revenue. But we will be receiving some more monies throughout the rest of the school year to get very close to that budget amount. We're still expecting over $300,000 in outer tax credit money to come from the state as well as over $600,000 of indirect costs, which we still should be receiving. Looking at the reserve fund summary, which is a few pages in, Mr. Gums usually just mentions this briefly. Total revenue, local holding account balance of $75 million. And that includes 6,000 and summer payroll reserve, which really we need to have. So I'm just asking for your approval of the monthly financial report as presented this evening.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the monthly financial statements for December for FY 22 as presented. Some. Moved by Mrs. Mal Martin and seconded by Mr. Bradley. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is the FY 22 financial position report for the third quarter.
Yeah, this is something we do several times a year. It demonstrates our ability to meet local payroll and other expenses for the period of January 1 to January 30. And the information demonstrates that we can meet our third quarter payroll obligations and we still have over $12 million in our local fund balance. So I'm asking for approval of this information then as well.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the financial position report for the third quarter. Moved by Mrs. Derek and seconded by Mr. Colick. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And last on our financial business is our FY 22 budget revised.
Yeah. So for you is our FY 22 revised budget. And the reason it's coming to you this evening as a revised budget because we have some things we need to update. And we need to reflect our state funding allocations based on a recent certified unit count. So we're, we receive a lot of funding based on numbers of students we have in our district and also our unit count. So the changes in this revised budget reflect that. Also, our updated, our federal allocations and some more current estimates of local revenue collections. You know, we kind of do our best to predict where we're going to be. But in some cases, it's not exactly what happens. In some cases, in actually a positive way, there are some changes made and I'll point this out later to overtime costs. And we budgeted much more money than we actually needed this year. We budgeted based on last year and challenges with COVID and starting our new, I guess enrollment process, having central registration. So it really did make a big difference. So I want to point some of those things out as we go through this document. Looking at page one. Obviously the change you see, pretty much all the changes are dealing with is unit count changes, enrollment changes. That, that really does change the amount of money we receive in different pots from the state. And work that Mr. Gums and Mr. Doofenstock did on this document just reflects that. Page two is just unit count. All the funding we've received based on our unit count, you know, in different topics on this page.
Mr. Fulton, start the items in red. Those are the changes.
Excuse me? Everything in red has been changed. Yes. Yep. Let's go to page three. Once again, increased based on enrollment changes. These are our school budgets. If the schools had more students than we predicted, then they received more money. If they had less, we held them harmless at the original amount. So that just, this is based on September 30, numbers of students in our schools. I could go to page five next. Just want to point out page five. Looking at athletics, really there was no change in the overall budget amount. There was just a shift in how the money, where the money came from. There were two items. I believe there were Eper and then athletics as far as coaches and those types of things. And the way it was originally set up, this had them kind of classified differently. So Mr. Gums just kind of balanced it out. I think it was $400,000 less and $400,000 more in two of those accounts, which equal out to net zero. See if I can find this. Yeah, page five.
Page six, I think.
Page six?
Yeah.
It would be six.
I'll take six for you. Okay. It was the athletics section. And under local salaries, they're just, they were just adjusted to just better reflect what is actually happening with the salaries. As you can see, I mentioned this earlier too. There was a difference of $50,000 in overtime for para educators, IT department and also clerical. There was a decrease of $49,000 in the budget amount in that one as well. That's something that we sort of have been keeping an eye on. Definitely there's some challenges with COVID and there have been some overtimes last year, the overtime amounts that were higher than normal. We want to kind of keep a close eye on that. We thought it would be a temporary thing, but all of, now Mr. Gums budgeted higher just in case those ramifications continued on this year. And, and they haven't. We're able to kind of get things under control and actually be able to decrease the amount spent in both those areas. So in sort of conclusion, FY 22 final budget projects total expenditures of $176 million, .3 million. Appreciate not just Mr. Gums, but the work of Mr. Doofendock, who's been helped us out and Mr. Gums absence. And, and a lot of work was put in and a lot of coordination between the two of them. In fact, I talked to both of them today and Mr. Gums is trying to convince me that we need two business managers and we just keep Mr. Doofendock too because of all the work, you know? I said, nice try, Mr. Gums. But obviously I have any questions, I'd like to ask them, answer them or get the answers for you. But also asking for approval of this FY 22 final budget proceeding.
Any questions or comments? Revised budget. It is a lot. So if you think of a question afterwards, please send them Mr. Fulton's way. And if we have no questions at this moment, I will entertain a motion to approve the revised FY 22 budget. Moved by Mr. Colick and seconded by Mr. Bradley. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Last thing on our agenda is our board committee reports. We'll go right down the line, Mr. Bradley.
Yes.
Yeah. I mentioned some things earlier. I should have just been quiet earlier.
You kind of did the whole update already. Thanks a lot. Steal all my time. So there were two new members voted into, onto the chefboard, Terron Burris and Mike, oh, and Mark Mazak. We approved some grants. We also had one grant for similar to kind of Boys on the, Girls on the Run. That took a little back and forth because I guess generally they don't like to give grants to like gender specific programs, but, and then was approved. It was like a, kind of like a Boys on the Run for HOB. Because I know there are a lot of members in Chef.
Let me run?
Yep, I think so. Yeah.
Let me run.
Yeah. And I know like my daughters had a positive experience with Girls on the Run. It's such a fantastic program. I was really thrilled to have one for the boys to have an equivalent and that it, that it would be funded by chefs. Gearing up for spring jam, not winter jam. And we're just reaching out to local businesses, trying to get donations. That's really makes, this is the big fundraiser of the year, obviously, and hoping there's a good turnout. It'll be nice to have it the outside. So COVID won't be such a concern.
I think it would be great. I think it would be the biggest turnout ever, I think.
Yeah, I think it's just going to be a great celebratory event, really, is what I'm anticipating. It's always a great event in the winter, but it'd be even better in the spring. And I feel like that Bob brought up just our need for encouraging substitutes. So that was led by Bob, kind of introduced to the chef board. They were very receptive to Bob. Giving the $50, gives you certificate, certificates to all the nominees, but also brainstorming other ways they could help.
Yeah, we just let them know that, you know, we continue to try to find ways to acknowledge our subs and also try to incentivize those to work for us as subs. And chef, you know, if we have any thoughts or ideas and things that they can do to support us in those efforts, they definitely want to do that. So that's nice, always nice to hear.
That's about it. It's very positive. People.
Our budget committee meeting was canceled, so we.
Yes, I met with Rivera as relates to buildings and grounds. Probably three things of note. Champions field has been completed. Donations and contractors and our shop teacher Josh Dixon, as well as some students are looking to build a clubhouse for the baseball team. And we do realize that we must be able to do the same for softball. So that's of note. And then we all know that we're growing and as a result, there will be some new modules on the sites of Mariner and Beacon for the 22, 23 school year.
Nobody likes modulars. Very much, Mr. Colick. And with that, our board is going to go back into executive session. So I'll entertain a motion to return to executive session. Moved by Mr. Bradley and seconded by Mrs. Derek. All those in favor? Moved by Mr. Bradley and seconded by Mrs. Derek. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Good night, everyone. Also legislative, the legislative meeting.